I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you and welcome to the Board of Aldermen's meeting for Monday, November 18th. Order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Move to approve.
Second.
Are there any changes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are outside the rail. Is there anyone to address the Board on matters not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Norman Cohen. I live at 8 Barleyfield. I haven't seen the agenda, so I...
That's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
So if I'm out of place, I won't be being called out.
That's fine. Thank you.
I just wanted...I was at the meeting two weeks ago, but I left early, I believe, early, and I just wanted to say that I was pleased with the action of the Board and commends the Board for...commend the Board for passing the motion on bias and bias funding. I think it's a great step. I think it sends a wonderful signal out about the community, and I commend you on it. I think it's a step forward as I now retire from 50 years of practicing law, and I'm around town and on the streets, I see more and more people of different colors, different nationalities than I ever had seen before. And I think that this sends a signal to a lot of these new people, I think they're new, that you care.
Thank you.
And you're looking out for them. And that's important because the country and the community are changing. So I really felt very good about it. I was delighted to read it in the paper. I have a small concern whether the money is sufficient, but you'll take care of that at a later time. I had the...wanted to mention that I spent some time today on the Human Rights Commission website, taking a test about implicit or unconscious bias. And somebody had mentioned it to me, I think it was Cheryl Hooker, and I decided to take it, knowing that we all have some. You know, I'm a liberal Democrat, I'm Jewish, I'm a minority. I was shocked how difficult it was. And if you have a spare 10 minutes, how uncomfortable. There's no big score or anything like that. It just draws your attention to how difficult the issue is and what a good step you've taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Is there anyone else outside the rail to address the Board on matters not on the agenda? Ms. Cheryl, your name and address for the record, please.
Charles Jolison, 210 Lincoln Avenue. My question is, how does the Board of Aldermen plan to address implicit bias? It's important to clarify that implicit bias is not limited to racial sensitivity. It extends to insensitivities to all protected classes, including but not limited to gender identity, age, religion, and ability. Hence, when the question of fiscal responsibility of implicit bias training is brought up, it must be understood that the benefits are many. Previously, $2,500 has been appointed to this work. Considering the diversity of protected classes, I wonder if this amount is efficient. Additionally, I wonder if the specific application of the funds is. How does the Board plan to follow up after any training? And how does the Board plan to address implicit bias in general? Thank you.
Basically, I don't know. The RFP has gone out with all the specifics. It is not just racial bias training. It is as many as we have put out, our purchasing agent put the RFPs out. I believe at the time, at least one, we know that that money is significantly...is appropriate. Until we get the RFPs back, we don't know. And I think the rest will take our direction from that trainer that we have. That's probably the best I can answer at this time. Is there anyone else outside the rail? Seeing none, we're moving on to communications from the mayor. Mayor Alair.
So, good evening, everyone. I just had one issue I wanted to speak to you about tonight. And I want to speak to this group here and everyone at home watching, especially the ratepayers and taxpayers of the city of Rowland. This is about the situation with Fathom. From my viewpoint, it's extremely maddening, unfortunate, and has caused a loss of confidence by the community in their water and sewer utility. I understand that. I understand that completely. I also vow that I will not rest until this situation has been rectified and everything has been resolved. There are multiple other communities facing this, unfortunately, but we're in much, much better position than many of those other communities. We have been meeting every single day since the announcement with all the players to look at and evaluate all the various options before us. I plan on communicating to the general public just as soon as I possibly can about the particulars of our path going forward, which is still being worked on. And I hope that that's going to be very, very soon. I want to again remind everyone that we own all the inventory of hardware. Financially, we are in good shape because of the structure of the financing, and we have options. We also have a little time on our side before our next billing cycle. So I thought it was important tonight that I address that issue, address it head-on to this board and to the people watching at night. And I believe there's going to be a report later on in this meeting from Public Works Committee, and then perhaps a discussion about that to the Board of Aldermen going forward.
Right. Thank you. Alderman, your turn.
Yeah, I was just wondering, so we have gotten a couple of calls from people out in the community. If they have questions, who should they contact?
They should call...contact the Department of Public Works, please.
Anyone else have any questions of the mayor? Not? We're moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda. We do need to add the executive session for Fathom services.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any debate on the motion to add to the agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Anything else that we need to add to the agenda? Seeing none. We're moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First, we have Treasurer Markowski, October 31st, 2019 treasurer report. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My apologies, I didn't get the report out until this afternoon. But I just wanted to do a quick recap. Cash balances are strong, with city accounts with $11.6 million, bank accounts and $4.4 million in general fund accounts. The delinquency report I attached, we had finance committee last week, and we spoke at length regarding that, so we'll see some changes there in reporting. We had eight tax sales in October. We had one property that was sold to an outside bidder. But the way the process works, the homeowner has 12 months redemption period to redeem that property. The pooled cash account, looking at water, sewer, and parking funds, they've all performed well with having cash resources. We're always looking at the transit center because it lags still with the due-to-the-city balance, although I see it as improvement as that balance has come down. I wanted to point out, as the auditors have been in, that they do have some concerns that they'll raise on that transit fund and how to resolve that balance due to the city. So I'll work with them on that, but wanted to point it out. Looking at the balance sheet and the income statements, the expenses in the general fund are on target, we're four months in at 33%. So just looking at the overall expenses, everything looked in line, and I didn't see anything that was really out of line for that period. In the IRA, the cash balance is about $112,000, and they are also on target with expenses. And I wanted to point out, when you look at the RA balance sheet, there's $30,000 set aside for different grants and projects in that, from the IRA. We continue to work with Sullivan Powers. They'll be in this week to do some more work on the audit. We usually don't get the report until March, but we really work hard on it right now, this time of year. And then I would like to point out, October is really busy as we're doing the water and sewer collection for November 1st. And we've also, just from what the mayor had said earlier, we just encourage people to continue with the unknowns with Fathom. We're open, pay at the counter, mail to the city. We've always been accepting payments that way until we know more about what platform we'll be using, so.
So any questions of the treasurer? Alderman, your turn.
You said there was eight tax sales in October?
Yes.
And one was bid on?
Yes, only one went to an outside bidder.
Okay.
That wasn't great, but we're hoping through the redemption period, like we had one last year that just redeemed, you know, the redemption date was February, and it just paid off, so, you know.
This is the...where we were a few years ago when we started to accumulate the properties again.
I know. I hope we don't end up with eight city-owned properties, so.
Alderman, deploy.
Mary, when the payments for water and sewer are sent in by mail, where does that go?
They can send it to the city, or if they send it, and I'm glad you asked that, if they...
Provided envelope.
If they send it in the envelope to, I think the address is Philadelphia, it settles in...Fathom will settle it, and we have been getting all of the money that's been collected by Fathom on behalf of the city has come back to the city. So everything is accounted for, but I don't...just the unknowns, I'm not sure. I would prefer to have folks, you know, mail to the city. But it doesn't mean that if you sent your payment to Philadelphia, it wouldn't get applied to your account. It will.
Right. And then, and I know we'll apply it to the payees' account. I don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem with is if that money gets into the hands of a company that's going out of business, I want to make sure we still get that money.
Yeah, and we're monitoring.
We are getting it.
Yep. We are. Yep. We have a weekly deposit. The assistant treasurer balances that and is...so we know what we're expecting even with that deposit before it comes in.
Okay.
That hasn't been a problem so far, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else, mayor?
That was it.
Do we want a motion to receive and file the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Second. Any debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Next, Brendan Duffy, RRA buy-up funding request. Welcome, Brendan.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So we have another recommendation from the RA to the Board of Aldermen. This time, we have a new business opening up at 46 North Main Street, which is the site of the old TD Bank. This will be a restaurant called Little Haveli. Applicant is here today, Ms. Harshin, who will be opening this. It will be an Indian restaurant focused primarily on takeout, with a couple seats there for folks that want to dine in, and also a convenience store, selling some Indian groceries and also beer and wine. So the recommendation from the Board of Aldermen is to offer a $5,000 buy-up grant to the new business to help offset some of the extensive personal investment that's gone into that. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any question? Alderman, your turn.
I'll just kind of move to suspend the rules. Take the exception.
Second. All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman, your turn.
Move to approve a $5,000 grant from the buy-up program for Rena Harshin for Little Haveli at 46 North Main Street.
Second.
Any debate on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next up, city engineer Rotondo, I think the commissioner's here, requests new contract for engineering design services. Commissioner Renberg.
Thank you and good evening. The bond issue that was passed last March, the one regarding bridges and culverts, needs to have the remaining culverts and bridge, three culverts, one bridge rehabilitation design work done. And we've done requests for proposals after the Board approved that. Seven firms were...submitted proposals. There's a summary on the handout, I believe, that you got, the packet of those results. And the city engineer and I recommend that the contract be awarded to DuBois &amp; King of South Burlington in an amount of $85,794. And that, again, is for the three culverts that are listed there and the Grove Street Bridge near the golf course. Due to the legal issues relative to the bond, our proposal is to use the money that...use this...get the money for this from the bridge maintenance fund, and that has a balance of a little over $234,000, so it can easily cover it. When the bond funds are available, we can reimburse the fund for the design work. So there isn't any issue regarding funding this if you want to proceed and award that this time. This would allow us to get the design work done over the winter and hopefully go out to bid sometime next year, possibly early. We'll just see how the timing goes. We are hoping to move ahead with the two culverts that were...the design work is being done by Otter Creek Engineering, and we're hoping to get those under construction next year. These might fit within that timeframe, depending on the nature of the amount of work that needs to be done, or it might be spread out over several more years. But the design work can proceed at this time.
So before we have a debate, Alderman, we just need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. If we get a motion on the floor, then we can debate. Alderman, with them.
Move to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for professional services related to the design of culvert replacements and rehabilitation of Grove Street Bridge Number 25 with DuBois &amp; King, Inc. for the amount of $85,794.
Second. We had...they also have culverts for Allen Street, Grove Street, and Lincoln? I didn't hear you say that.
Oh, I did not. Sorry.
And money to come from the bridge maintenance fund.
Rachel? Yep.
Yes.
I should point out that this was the most affordable of the seven proposals, and also it scored the highest in terms of capabilities when they do the point scoring in the engineer's office. So it was the best deal and the best product in terms of what they were proposing to do.
Alderman, deploy.
So two things, Madam President. One, Jeff, is any of the bridge at Grove Street at the golf course the responsibility of Rutland Town in any way, or no?
No.
When you step off the bridge on the north side, are you then in Rutland Town? I forget exactly where the line is.
I think the line is a little further to the...where are we going?
South to the north.
To the north. A little further to the north. I don't think it's right at the bridge. I think it's further.
200 feet, right.
The bridge is entirely within the city.
Okay. And second question is, is the Lincoln culvert, Lincoln Avenue culvert, we had talked about we were going to do some surface work both directions. Is that included in any of this funding?
No, because that was funded through this year's appropriation for paving and streets maintenance. We had an issue with the contractor not able to get the work done in a timely fashion. So our expectation is that that paving work will be done next spring. It's still in the budget. We still have the funding for it. We just didn't want to push it, and it was a good call this year, given how soon winter arrived. We didn't want to push it past the October 15th deadline because you get into very iffy conditions regarding applying pavement and whether or not it's going to last, dealing with temperatures like we've had. So we told them, no, we're not going to allow you to extend past the deadline. We'll have to do this additional work. It's quite a bit of work. We've got a lot of streets that didn't get done, but we weren't going to do it at a time when it would risk the quality of the job. So unfortunately, we'll have to suffer through another winter. When we get to the spring, we'll have the funds available, and we'll be able to get that work done. The plan was to do north and south of the culvert, and then basically to come in and to rebuild the culvert and put it together. So it would be a very nice road up to that horrible section, and then leave the horrible section until we replace it and then key it all in. That was the original plan. We can still do that. We want to make sure, however, that we don't have...ideally, what we wanted to do was to do the culvert first and not have heavy equipment running over the new pavement. Unfortunately, we couldn't get the contractor to do that. So we may push this...I know the people on Lincoln Avenue hate hearing this, but we may push this project, this one, up earlier so we can get it done, and hopefully, I just don't see that happening before July. I'm sorry. So if we pave it and we do the road work next year, we're going to be running the risk that we may damage the road surface when we do the heavy work on the culvert, but...
That was going to be my follow-up.
Yeah. Well, we added time very differently, but things beyond our control mitigated against us in this case.
Thank you. Alderman, with them.
Jeff, I'm actually just curious, how were they able to come in so substantially lower than the competitors?
I wish Jim were here to answer that, because he's the one who did...he and Ted did the analysis. I think basically, the way Jim described it to me, because I asked a similar question, was that the firm has an individual or individuals on staff who are very expert in this work, and some of the other firms, some of the other smaller firms, are hiring that expertise from outside consulting. So between those fees and their markup and everything else, I think it made it non-competitive. And there's one or two firms here that are very large, and apparently they valued it much more highly. DuBois &amp; King is just about the perfect size for this type of work. So I think that served them well in their pricing.
Anyone else? Not the motion on the floor is to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with DuBois &amp; King for $85,794 from the bridge maintenance fund account. Any further debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Recreation Superintendent Peters, Community Recreation Center update and summer update. Welcome, Tim.
So I passed out two different documents. They look similar, but they are different. I was going to briefly go over the fiscal recap and summer. I did this last year, and I'm not going to read through the whole document. You have it. But I just wanted to highlight a few things that, especially with budget season coming up. Our revenue has increased overall 18% in the last two years, and specifically in programs, 14.5%. So if you look at overall increase in revenue, of course, you could put that on the pool, you know, opening up, that's $50,000 worth of income. But when you look at just programs in general, over the past two years, we've increased 14.5%. Some of those attributes, obviously, are summer programs. We added our day camps, preschool camps, and introduced a few other new programs that have helped with the revenue. I highlighted a few partnerships. There are plenty more, but some of the ones that kind of stuck out as I was reviewing our year. A few of our events, again, lots more, but some that stuck out to me. And then some of the new programs that we saw this past year, not just in the summer, but throughout the last fiscal year. That was important to talk about, the new assets. We added fencing at Giorgetti at the baseball field. The creek path, Section 4, not only was added, but our maintenance staff added beautification to the path. It looks really nice. The Rotary Pavilion is complete. Currently, the leasing of CSJ Gymnasium, we're going to call this the RRCC, which I will talk about in a little bit. The safety improvements are pretty much complete at Giorgetti Complex, and the Rotary Party Sign...park signs in conjunction with the Rutland Park Foundation. The white pool, Memorial Park Pool, pretty much stayed the same as far as memberships from last year, but we did see an increase in groups utilizing the facility throughout the summer.
Any questions so far of Superintendent Peters? Set? Okay.
So it's hard to believe that it's...we're only going into three weeks of the Rutland Rec Community Center is what we're trying to name this as we're in this next five months of a lease. On November 1st, we had the open house. We counted about 400 residents, non-residents coming through to check out the facility, and we opened the very next day. Something that happened that I wasn't really expecting is that we were going to be open all day. If you look at the hours, but with the mall closing, literally the day before we opened, it became a necessity. And so what I've done is I've stationed myself at the center for now. The hours are listed there. What that also did is create an opportunity to create a membership. A $10 a month is what we felt. Me and my staff did a day meeting going over, what are we trying to do here? What is our purpose? What is our mission? Who are we trying to serve? And we came up with a $10 membership. That $10 a month membership is for 7th grade and older, meaning 7th, 8th years can come by themselves, unaccompanied by anybody. They can stop in. 6th grade and under is free, as long as they're with an adult. You know, we were looking at the $10 a month. What I was struggling with was having a family of five or six that have young kids. You're looking at that $60 a month, and that's not what we wanted to do. The $10 a month has been well received by the community. My goal was 100 memberships, and we're only into Week 3, and we're at 180 memberships. So what that is doing is then helping pay for our evening and weekend staff, which was not expected. That was going to be an extra cost. With that, and then with our daily passes, so some, you can come in and just do a $2 pass for the day. As of today, we're at $232 collected of daily passes. And as far as rentals go, we have collected $2,200 from the craft fair, which people are very excited that it's coming back. And also Summit Soccer has started to utilize it when we're not open. What I've...what I've made a promise to our staff and to the community, people coming in, is that we're doing two-week schedules. So if you're expecting to come in for open gym or to go walk, then you're going to be able to, because the schedule's been out for two weeks. So if somebody was to rent...went to rent, they have to at least do three weeks in advance. I also found that we want to keep it as open as possible. We don't want to overprogram or overbook. We want this to truly be a community center where people can come and recreate, and we're definitely finding that every day. You know, we have the gym, which is great, but we also have three other rooms that we've created, a fitness room, a movement room, and a game room, in addition to the racquetball courts. So if a family comes in and they want to play basketball, then go play the racquetball courts. They can go do that. And the racquetball courts are multi-use, so you can go in and play dodgeball. So we had a family come the other...on Sunday, the basketball court was a little bit filled, so I said, why don't you guys go play dodgeball? And they were super excited. We had 10 kids with three adults come in. So what we're finding, what I'm finding, is a lot of things are just happening organically. We're trying to figure out how are we going to utilize this space? So that's been great. Attendance, we're averaging about 65 daily. That's a typical day without the high school kids that come in at night. The highest, I put 200, the highest was actually 300 after I'd done this report. Sunday, we had over 300 people come through the doors. That's with Summit Soccer. Youth Theater's been utilizing the space, and then just community members. The usage is...it just, every day we get different people coming in. We have the Boys and Girls Club. We have...the Howard Center came in the other day, and we're also giving them deals, similar to what we do in the pool in the summertime. What can you afford? Who are you bringing in? And then I work with them as far as financial, what their financial...what they can afford. Below, it just talks a little bit at the end, some financials, how we're staffing that. As I said, I'm typically the one there during the day. My program staff will come and relieve me, because if I'm not...we need to have somebody there. There's not an hour that goes by that there's not somebody in the building to utilize the facility. The next page just talks about the revenue, which I was just talking about. I have some other ideas of revenue coming in. Talked about the rentals. Some of the challenges, I just want to mention these, because these are some of the things that we had talked about prior to. What I've found out, this is really much like a mini YMCA. So we are working typically a square footage, the 22,000 square foot, you would have two to three people working, you know, to accommodate the needs. So myself being there during the day is great, but at night, we've had to staff it with two high school, college-age kids versus just one, just safety reasons, and the facility is pretty large. Finding some issues with the doors. We're fixing as we go along. We're fixing as we go along. If we were to move forward with the purchase or a longer lease, we would definitely want to put a better plan in process for that. But we do have, first-line security came out. They have censored every door and we will have a touchpad to get into the building the first time, whoever goes into the building first and whoever leaves last. That way, if something was to be opened in the middle of the night or when we're not there, the police will be notified, similar to our other buildings. Finding a few leaks. Again, fixing as we go along, nothing major, but things that our maintenance crew has identified and been able to fix. You know, this feels like forever ago, but probably just about two months ago when Bob spoke to some of the needs, the larger needs, the heating system. I could not be more thankful for our staff that was on top of that because we've had the one cylinder go, that we were talking about the two cylinders, and one has gone and one was never there. They didn't know where it went. So since then, Friday, air, we were able to get all the parts in and everything got started up today. So over the last four days, we had mornings where the heat was off. And luckily, with Bob and the maintenance crew identifying this early enough, we were able to fix the problem. So that, I mean, it was huge. And the only other issue I'm having right now is you still can't call me. So I can call out, you can't call in. We've worked with, we're working with, communicated, consolidated, and they're trying to help fix the problem. But we can at least dial out. So if you need me, you email me first or call me on my cell phone. Overscheduling, I kind of talked about, and then some of the needs that we're looking to either go out and get donations. I have had a couple companies say they would donate certain things to us. So I listed those there and we may be putting something out on Facebook to start to get some other things in. The last page just talks about the thanks, the maintenance staff, my program staff, seasonal staff. Right now, we have six high school, college kids that are really putting in the effort. We want to keep consistency there. They have to enter money throughout the night and through the evenings. They have to keep track of the people that are there. Sometimes they have to manage the courts because we're having 50 to 60 people come in to play basketball at a time. The nice thing about this gym is that it has two courts. So you can run that side by side and they're pretty much like full courts. The mayor, attorney Blumer, Blumer and all the city staff, it's not just more work for me, but it's obviously been more work for Mary and the staff because the bills are coming in and we're trying to figure out how to do some of those things, build a school, so on and so forth. The Board of Aldermen, again, from the beginning, been in support and I cannot express enough that, you know, we all kind of came in, yeah, this is going to work, but I cannot explain or even put an impression on you to say how well it has worked. The amount of mall walkers that we have coming in to recreate, we opened at eight, by 8:05, I have 20 walking and sometimes you hear them playing basketball. So it's pretty amazing. The Rutland High School, the coaches have been great. We have the schedule worked out for December and the community support we have received has really just been overwhelming. My mornings are spent with gratitude, people thanking us, and they're ready to move forward. So thank you.
Alderman Depoy.
Yeah, so one of the things that Kim brought up was there's a game room that they're developing there at the center and I think you said there's a pool table on the way.
We have a pool table. We have, yes, and arcade games are going in there.
And they have an air hockey table there too, I saw.
Yep.
But if anybody has anything sitting at home, a foosball table, a ping pong table, anything like that, a tabletop or an upright old arcade game, those are all the types of things that can, you know, go in, or give, like one of those little digital hoop shoots, stuff like that.
We have one of those. It's coming, yeah. We're getting, every day it's the same thing. People are like, oh, I have this. Do you want that? So we have a pretty large storage too, that even if it can't go into some of the smaller rooms, when we have family nights, we could do it in the gym. You can, we can bring stuff out. Somebody's donating a brand-new foosball table and ping pong table. So we're getting that kind of stuff in. Like I said, the amount of support has been, has been pretty big. Today too, I wanted to mention, Mill River had a half a day. I had 10 high school girls in at 12 o'clock because they start, their gym is down right now. It's not because of, it's because it was planned, but they are coming in to practice and they heard about it and they bought memberships. So that was, that was pretty cool today too.
Nice. When I was there, the Rutland High School Boys Program was there. There's probably, I don't know, 20, 30 guys.
Yeah, there's 25 there.
Preseason workouts, you know, doing drills and whatever, you know, they were doing. And it was really nice to see a facility like that getting used as heavily as it is. And when Kim told me that there were 300 people that went through the doors on Sunday, I mean, what more can we ask for as a community right now than to have that kind of usage on a facility like this? But they do still need a lot of things, even some, if, you know, people have weights or any kind of weight training or ellipticals or treadmills that they might be able to use that are in good shape, obviously, working order, contact him at the rec department and try to, you know, donate whatever you can to help out that facility.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sounds very exciting. We're glad to have it here.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to reports of standing committees. First up, Alderman Mattis, Charter and Ordnance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, my voice isn't its usual loud voice. The Charter and Ordnance Committee met on November 7th. The meeting convened at 5:30. Members present were Alderman Chris Etori, Melinda Humphrey, Bill Gillum, and myself. Others present were Board President Davis, Alderman Depoy, Building Inspector Bob Pelletier, Zoning Administrator Tara Kelly, and Dave Cooper. This past summer, Alderman Mattis met with Dave Cooper of the RRA to discuss improvements to the proposed sign ordinance draft, specifically format changes and some clarification in language definitions, et cetera, with the goal being to improve the user-friendliness and clarity of the document for businesspeople and others using the ordinance. He graciously agreed to draft these changes and then met with Tara Kelly and myself to review them in detail. The purpose of this meeting was to present the proposed draft revisions to the Charter and Ordnance Committee as a whole. The committee was happy with the changes presented. We agreed that we would use the revised draft as our working copy of the proposed new ordinance. There was a brief update as to lighting regulation. Since the current proposed draft prohibits internally lighted signs, but the committee wishes to allow these signs, myself and Tara Kelly have been meeting with local sign professionals for their input as to what regulations, if any, the committee might wish to place on such signs. This is still in progress and will be the subject of our next meeting. The meeting adjourned at 6:15. This report is for information only.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Alderman Mattis? Seeing none, thank you. Next, we have Alderman Etori, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee met on November 13th to discuss the FY20 first quarter treasurer's report. Committee members present were myself, Alderman Gillum, Humphrey, Reveal, and Wickham. Other Aldermen present were President Davis, Alderman Depoy, Mattis, and Tomala. Others present, Mayor Laer, Treasurer Markowski, Assistant City Treasurer Lynn Holmquist, and Gordon D'Chillo from the Herald. The committee convened at 5:35 PM to discuss the first quarter treasurer's report for FY20. The treasurer pointed our attention to the numbers by department, noting the variations and the causes, such as additional health care and liability insurance payments made in this quarter and the seasonal nature of the rec department. Next, the treasurer discussed the increase in delinquencies of a few hundred thousand dollars from FY19 and earlier. She noted that there was an increase of people who couldn't pay anything for the past year and with an internal procedure of bringing properties to tax sale after two years, the treasurer's office is going to be stepping up collection efforts to help bring people current. President Davis asked if many people were setting up payment plans, to which Mayor replied that they weren't, but it is a focus of their collection efforts and her office welcomes people to reach out to set one up. Alderman Depoy and Wickham inquired about any trends in the delinquencies and whether the increase was mostly commercial, in which sectors it might be, or if it was mostly residential, noting that with a low unemployment rate, perhaps people were working but not earning enough to pay their expenses. The treasurer said she would look deeper into the numbers to see if there were any details to note. At 5:50, the committee moved into the FY21 Budget Review Agenda Item, which will be reported out when scheduled by the board chair. This report was for information only.
Thank you. Is there any questions of Alderman Etori's Finance Committee report? Seeing none, we're up to Alderman Clifford, Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to apologize to the board for not having anything ready for this. The Public Works Committee met on November 14th at 5:30. Members present were myself, Alderman Etori, Alderman Mattis, Alderman Tomala, and Alderman Gillum. Others present were Alderman Humphrey, Alderman Reveal, Alderman Wickham, Mayor Laer, Treasurer Markowski, Assistant Treasurer Holmquist, Attorney Blumer, Gordon D'Chillo from the Herald, Commissioner Wenberg, and the Business Manager, Caruso. The board, or the, I'm sorry, the committee went into executive session to discuss probable litigation. There was no action taken at the time and it's for information only.
Okay, and we have an executive session this evening. So is there any other standing committee reports? Select committees, representatives? Alderman Clifford.
I have something just to update the board on through the solid waste district. There was a new director that was hired. His name is Mark Shea. He has had some town manager experience in Castleton and also Gorham, New Hampshire. And he was, we're very impressed by his resume and things are looking good so far. We discussed some budget issues. So that's just about it. We'll keep you, as things progress, we'll keep everybody posted.
Great, thank you.
Madam President, I need to add to this. We're lacking one representative. I'm not sure if it comes from this board or if it comes from the mayor's office. I represent the mayor, he represents the board. There's a third member at large that needs to be appointed. So I'd like to refer that to the mayor, if I could.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any debate on the motion to refer? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We have no petitions, letters, or miscellaneous communications, nothing under the Board of Control Commissioners, sitting under unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board?
So, Madam President.
Alderman Depoy.
I just want to let the public know and everybody that there is a budget meeting for public safety that'll be this Thursday, 5:30. I've gotten a few calls about that, just asking how the budget is looking for fire department and city police department. So anyone else that might be interested, this Thursday, 5:30 is the committee meeting on that. Next week, it doesn't look like we have any meetings for this board committee or any budget meetings. They'll be after that. And the rec committee is meeting on Tuesday, the 3rd, at 5:30. There's a project vision get-together down at the middle school, I believe it's at, in the cafeteria down there.
Intermediate.
It's in the intermediate school at 6 to 8. So the rec department meeting, as soon as we're done with that, we'll get down there and we'll probably be a little bit late for that, but just wanted to let everybody know that that's what's on the horizon.
So to that point, have we got anybody, generals, the only one that's left to be scheduled?
Yep.
Okay, so we just need to get that scheduled.
I think it's December.
Yours is December 11th currently, I believe. Any other unfinished business? Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business to come before the board?
I think so.
Alderman Wickham.
Yeah, I just want to give a quick update to the public that on Thursday night at 5:30, the Rutland Area Robotics Kids are going to be presenting at the Mint. One of the issues that's come up recently in the city is pedestrian safety and it so happens that one of their groups is actually working on some very creative ideas to address pedestrian safety and they have proposals that I think they'll eventually like to bring before the city. And there's also another group working on transportation that is focused largely on innovative bus shelters. I've had a sneak preview of this work. It's absolutely incredible. If you have the opportunity, please get down to the Mint, 5:30 on Thursday and check it out.
Great, thank you. Alderman Reveal.
Thank you, Madam President. Just as many of you know in the community, Chris Thayer, he got diagnosed in the summer, terminal cancer. He has admitted into Rutland. He isn't doing well. So if everybody could just keep him in his thoughts and prayers. He's a good buddy of mine, so just keep him in your thoughts.
We will, thank you. Any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? All right, we'll need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
If it was only so keen.
It used to be.
You guys don't know this by now? Actually, I still need my cheat sheet. So the motion is to find that premature general public knowledge regarding probable litigation to which the city would be a party would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the city's strategy in such probable litigation and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Attorney Blumer.
Motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the city attorney, mayor, treasurer, commissioner of public works to discuss probable litigation under, or as allowed, under Title I, Section 313A1E and Title I, Section 313A1F.
So moved.
Second.
Any debate on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll stand down while we clear the room.